Folks, excuse me. Excuse me, folks. Tonight, we're broadcasting live again on YouTube. I want to let you know that it plays both video and audio. That's available to you at Robinson Review at any time without like no requests, et cetera. Provides a complete program. For those of you who missed it, it was also for the first time broadcast our sewer authority meeting last night. Chris, was that two and a half hours worth?
Yeah, about four hours.
So, three hours worth.
Quarter ten, I should think.
There's all kinds of things happening. Additionally, we got a nice packed crowd tonight, which is what I like to see, like to hear. I'm not sure we can necessarily override the A.C. very easily. I'm up on that, but I have asked whoever's in that N.C. slash somebody else to kind of take care of that. So, welcome for those of you that don't come regularly. Like to see you more often. Thank you. We do have a pledge and a moment of silence just for those of you who are not familiar with our procedure. How many of you are here for the public hearing? Who's here for the public hearing? Meaning the magazine facility? Who's here for that? All right, well, that's first on the agenda, so.
We'll call the Robinson Township Board of Orders and we'll call the board to lead us to the process. I'll tell the person now.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you.
Hello, guests.
Mr. Rose.
I'm here.
I'm here. Turn the media over to Mr. Orlando for our hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman. Good evening, everyone. This is a public hearing to consider the adoption of an ordinance. I'll read the title of the ordinance. An ordinance of the township of Robinson, Berks County, P.A., amending the Code of Ordinance, amending the Code of Robinson Township, Chapter 27, zoning by defining and permitting storage magazine facilities by conditional use in the agricultural preservation zone, zoning district, subject to specific criteria as well as certain technical amendments. First order of business is the authentication of the board exhibits for the public hearing. Board Exhibit B1 is proof of public notice of this hearing that was advertised in the Reading Eagle on April the 2nd and April 9th. Board Exhibit B2 is a transmittal letter dated April 1st, 2024, evidencing the fact that the full text of the ordinance was forwarded to the Reading Eagle Company. Board Exhibit B3 is a transmittal letter dated April 1st, 2024, evidencing the fact that an attested copy of the ordinance was sent to the Berks County Law Library. Board Exhibit B4 is the complete ordinance and also contains the stamp of the Berks County Law Library, evidencing the fact that the law library received the ordinance on April the 5th, 2024. Board Exhibit B5 is a transmittal letter dated March 1st, evidencing the fact that the proposed ordinance was sent to the Berks County Planning Commission. And Board Exhibit B6 is a letter from the Berks County Planning Commission dated March 15th, 2024, providing planning about Berks County Planning Commission comments with regard to the ordinance. The ordinance proposes to create a new use in the agricultural preservation zone for, that are defined as storage magazine facilities, which is defined as, quote, "a use permitted for the purpose of storage of explosives that are intended to be used off premises as provided by the ordinance." This is a public hearing, so the public has an opportunity to comment. Please note that this public hearing is being transcribed by our stenographer. So, anybody that wishes to make comment, we're going to give everyone an opportunity to do that. If you wish to make a comment, I'll ask you to please stand. Please give your full name and address and then make whatever public comment you want. Please note that our stenographer can only take one person speaking at a time, so please wait your turn. We'll make sure that everyone has the opportunity to comment that wishes to do so. So, with that as background, is there anyone here in the public that wishes to offer any public comment with regard to the adoption, the proposed adoption of this ordinance? Will you stand? State your full name and address.
Harold Steve, 37, I mean, you could be. Steve, S.T.E.B.
Oh, Steve.
Okay. A couple of things that I don't quite understand. This is being done for a specific property. It's not something that can be put anywhere else in the township. How does that not add up to unspot zoning? Is it because we're allowing the use and we avoid the spot zoning that way? Or, you know, it kind of negates the fact that now we have neighbors have no idea what's going on unless they happen to purchase ready in.
Well, first of all, there is no specific property mentioned at all in this ordinance, so your first statement is incorrect.
Well, when I asked, when I asked the question of the people presenting it, they said it is the only unique property in the township that could be placed.
Well, I don't know what other people have said. All I know is there was no property mentioned.
Are we aware of any other properties you've put?
I do not have that information, nor is it relevant for this hearing, in my opinion.
Okay. The other thing is, with the direct firefighting personnel, in the event there's a fire out at the forest again, the big woods, I guess they call it, how are we, how does, how much fire protection is this going to take away from firefighters fighting that fire and protecting the homes and residents?
Can't answer that question either.
Okay, so then that would, that would be a question more directed towards supervisors, then how is that conducive with protecting the health and safety of the public?
You can ask as many questions as you wish. The board has any response to Mr. Steve? Just the fire department, Harold, or also safety in general?
Safety in general, because these vehicles are going to be traversing the township roadways through developments or wherever they happen to go.
Chief, you had looked at this before, we had discussed this. What was your thought for the safety from the police standpoint?
From the police standpoint, as long as we receive proper training, that's fire and police, not just police, I'm satisfied.
And the ordinance does provide specifically for that?
Correct. And I have actually spoke to a company that does provide that training, and it is available, and they're willing to do it for us. What my recommendation was, or suggestion, I should say, was that when we train, we train together, police and fire, because obviously if an incident would occur, we're going to be responding together. So, it only makes sense to train together.
And is fire a different thing? But still, if something happens to the development, how does that protect the residents? It doesn't. It's a reaction to another problem.
Anything further, Harold?
I have one more, but I can't remember where it was, so I'll let somebody else get back to you.
Will you stand up, state your full name and address?
Tom Light, 74 Cedar Lane, Berks, P.A.
What's your last name, please?
Light, L.I.C.H.D.
Go ahead, Tom.
I've done some research. There's a litany of alcohol, tobacco, and firearms. Has a litany of requirements for this, for this magazine. And the question I have is, how come it's not in the ordinance that they have to comply with the alcohol, tobacco, and firearms regulations?
Actually, it is. The ordinance specifically says that they have to comply with all federal and state requirements. D.E.P. also has additional requirements for this use, which they have to comply with.
The only other thing is liability insurance. How much liability insurance are they going to be required to carry on this piece of property that they're going to put this magazine in?
They're required to carry insurance under a code of mail. It may be specified in Europe.
Less than $1,000,000. And $2,000,000 in aggregate, naming the township as an additional insured with full labor segregation.
Answer your question, Tom.
Is that enough?
Probably never have enough in charge, because you don't know what's going to happen. Does anyone else wish to make public comment? Will you stand up, state your full name and address?
Hi, my name is Alex Reevee, R.I.E.E. E is in baseball, E. 178 Whispering Pines, Miami, Berks. I'm sorry I came late, so I missed the commission. I have just a general question. Why is someone coming to our township to do this? Why aren't they in Bowmanville, where they're located, and do it in their own, in their own, where they live? Why should we take the burden of bringing hazardous and dangerous, you know, magazine storage to our property? I just have that general question for the board. You're responsible for protecting us. They seem like a reasonable company based on their website review there, and they're concerned about safety and the neighborhoods that they work in. But I, I would like to know why to that. Why, why are we, why are they coming here? Why isn't there somewhere else? Yeah, do we get, do we get something, do we get tax receipts or something if they have this activity in our township? Thank you, that was my second question.
I don't know. If you could answer why you picked here versus other locations?
Yeah, I'm Keith Brubacher.
I'm sorry, you're going to have to stand up, sir.
Good evening. Keith Brubacher, I'm managing member of Trendy Drilling and Blasting and FreeXplow, the two trade names that we operate by. You may be familiar with our other business, Brubacher Excavating. We've been operating explosive magazine storage sites for about 40 years. We do have a site in Bowmanville in our own backyard. In fact, I grew up with one within walking distance of my house. That's no longer active. So, we're looking for an additional site as the business grows, and we have opportunity to provide needs for our community that has quarrying, asphalt, and other construction activities. So, this is an additional site, and it's a unique combination of opportunity with that presents a less dense population, a property owner that's willing to work with us, and a township that we've been working cooperatively to address the zoning process so that we can do our best to protect the variety of interests at stake.
That leads to the question of what roads would we use for, for travel? Are the roads wide enough for these trucks or rivers bringing all these, this ammunition and stuff in? How is that protected? How do our citizens of our township know that? Is there requirements for roads to bring this ammo and stuff in?
Well, they could probably answer that better, because I know we asked you those questions early on in the process about what roads and how you're managing it and safety. I know the chief's already responded to that before, too.
Yes.
Yeah, we would primarily look for the, the best road, Hopewell Road back out to Route 23. We're not meandering through developments and things. And the trucks that we use are not tractor trailers that we're doing our daily hauling out to projects with. So, they're, they're not large trucks that are going back and forth. In fact, the milk truck is bigger than our daily, daily deliveries. So, we're, we're not meandering about. It would be a direct route to the larger roads like Route 23. And obviously, the other end is back to French Creek, so we're not, you know, going back into campground, et cetera.
How many tons a day would you be, trucks be coming in and out of the township?
Typically, we're picking up in the morning and then in the evening delivering any excess back into the safe storage of the magazine site. So, it's a handful of small trips per day, and then every so often a larger bulk delivery. And you can verify my testimony at prior hearings regarding the details.
Sir, you don't work Sundays, that's correct?
Very rarely. Our company policy is a day of rest out of every seven. That's typically on Sunday. If there's a project that requires a seven-day work week, we allow our employees to have a day of rest, and it's very rare that we would be working on a Sunday.
ATF requires them to have a log of all their explosives, magazines, wherever, what location is. What's the maximum amount of all your locations? What's the maximum of all those explosives from one site? What's the impact for that?
So, the amount that will ultimately be able to store at this particular site will be dependent upon the details that ATF determines, based upon distances, the final design. We have not yet completed the final design, because we're still through, working through the approval process. So, we don't know what the final amount will be, but we'll obviously operate within that maximum that they permit for the poundage of explosives.
So, what would your, just an average site? You said you had other sites. What would be your average amount of, I don't know what the right term is, side bit?
Our, our other site, our other site that's very similar, it is around 90,000 pounds. So, I would expect this one to be a little bit more than that, is what we would anticipate, but that has yet to be determined.
Thank you. But so, the fall to that 90,000 pounds, what if all of that went off at once? Which I know is the high end of the risk, but how far out would people be impacted by that? Miles?
There's a, yeah, there are, there are requirements that ATF and D.E.P. put upon us for good reason, to create berms and barriers so that if there were an unplanned detonation, the force of the explosion would be directed upwards rather than directly out. So, there are requirements for earthen berms, a variety of other things that they require around that. And the explosives are stored in non-sparking magazines. You can't even have a ferrous metal screw hole hit, head in that, in that magazine so that there's not sources of accidental detonation, static electricity. All the things are managed to prevent that.
Given the wide impact that this could have to our township, should, do you have a notice when there's something for hazards? I don't know what the township rules are, to notice the population of our township? That this, this, you're considering bringing, allowing this to happen in our township? Because I only heard it through neighbors. I didn't even know that it was going on, and I was stunned that we were considering it. Appreciate that they want to try to, you know, have something that's close by. We're also impacted by it, too, and we have the right to say no.
I have a question, okay? Only because I live next to the quarry. The quarry was established long before I came here and before probably all of us came here. How much more of a risk are we putting somebody at that the blasting is that I deal with with the quarry? Because they're required to keep certain setbacks, the barriers, all those things that you're talking about.
Yeah, so, two things.
Wait, I don't know who you are.
Oh, I'm sorry. James Strong, I'm an attorney with McNeese Wallace and Nurk. Been working with the township, I think, going back over a year on, on this matter. To address the gentleman's question regarding notice, I just wanted to point out that this is just a first step. If this amendment is adopted, then the applicant would still have to file a conditional use application, so the use is not permitted by right, the use is permitted by conditional use. So, that application would be filed with the township. The planning commission would review it. The board of supervisors would hold a hearing pursuant to public notice, so everyone would have notice of that hearing and would have an opportunity to attend, review that application, present comments, et cetera. So, in terms of what that next step would be, it would be a public hearing with public notice that the neighbors would be advised of. With respect to signage, the general approach, I think this has been discussed at prior meetings, is not to put a sign out at the, at the road advising that there are explosives stored there just so you're not advertising that to people who then may, you know, become interested in what's back there. So, in terms of notice and signage, in terms of the quarry operation, I'll defer to, to these folks, but the quarry operation obviously has active blasting, and that is not the case. This is just storage. So, the, the use.
It was just a comparison.
Yeah, so the, the use is very heavily regulated by both the ATF and the D.E.P., and the setbacks that are mandated are imposed by those agencies. And so, obviously, we would have to comply with not only the provisions of the ordinance, but also the regulations and requirements imposed by those agencies as well. So, it is very heavily regulated, including the setbacks. And again, this would only be allowed on properties that are 100 acres or more in agricultural preservation zones. So, we're not looking at small properties that are near other properties. So, hopefully, I've addressed those questions.
Got two more questions. Is ammonium nitrate product going to be on the property?
Adam, the ball.
What's your last name?
D.I., D.A.U., with electricity, with keys. Sorry, what was your question?
Is ammonium nitrate product? When I was reading through the regulations, some of the stuff that says there's ammonium nitrate product, is it going to be on the property where there's additional requirements? And what's the impact of it against the waters?
So, anything that's stored on the property is approved by D.E.P. for the storage in, in those containers. Each storage container will be fortified based on D.E.P. and ATF regulations. There is, there will be ANFO stored on site. It's not bulk, it's, it's bags, so it's a much smaller scale than, than anything you may, may research.
But that still can leak, right?
I mean, it's contained in, in bags and, and a whole, like, the site is going to personally, like, depending on the engineering, again, like Keith and the attorney mentioned, the site is not engineered, there's no final design yet. So, all the containment and all that will be reviewed and, and approved.
The last question is, and this is, I don't know which one of the gentlemen addressed it, is the security. If you look through all the regulations, it says they have to have all this crazy security, and given today's world, unfortunately, we have a lot of people wondering. So, security is going to be more. Is this going to, do we need to consider having them put greater security around their facility? Is that what's required because of just the world today? I mean, I'm not saying that these are maximal what they are. I would know if it would meet certain standards, so please bear with me. I'm just thinking about our community, which drivers walking around and finding somewhere rural to go. And I, you know.
Yeah, yeah. So, there's multiple ways of, of securing that's, that's within the regulations. You have barricades. Each individual unit is locked itself, multiple locks, cameras. We have, our current site, it's monitored 24/7.
And you have fences and?
It's barricades around, like, no vehicle can get inside that unless you're authorized to be in there.
Thank you for your time, and thank you for your answers. I appreciate it.
Anyone else from the public wish to make public comment?
I get it.
Please stand, state your full name and address.
My name is Linda Light, L.I.C.H.D., 74 Cedar Lane, Berks, P.A.
Thank you.
Okay. I get it, you need it to work with. It's dangerous, though, and unless we have more facts, and there's a lot of distrust going on with everything that's happening in this country, but we're not getting enough facts, we're not getting any pictures, and even though there's supposed to be protection set up, it doesn't work. Bowen, door's coming off. The shot people were forced to take, it doesn't work. Boats, nothing to see here, going into a bridge. Things happen, and I understand you do everything you can to prevent it, but you have to assure us that you are going to, I don't even know what the bunker looks like. I don't even know what types of dynamite or whatever else you're using. But stuff happens, even with the most protection. Factories that make fireworks, boom. You've got a lot of people coming into the country that are not vetted. Things will be happening. I see World War III coming down the road. They know where this bunker is. Who knows? But I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel safe. It's up to you guys, ladies, to let them do this. But me personally, unless we have all the facts, this is very, very dangerous. Have you ever had where you had your explosives previously? Was there ever any theft there? Did you ever have problems with people stealing or breaking into it? I'm asking.
Keith Brubacher again. Years ago, I believe it was in the 1980s, at the magazine site just down the road from my house that I referenced, there was an incident where, under a different security system, this is again pre-9/11, someone got in and damaged a lock and was able to take some material. They were found, the materials recovered, et cetera. Since that time, there have been significant changes, most post-9/11, that have required many more levels of security, as Adam just described. That involve constant monitoring, cameras, phone calls that go to a chain of people, et cetera. Including, the township has requested to be notified along with our folks if there were ever to be a breach. So, that's the only, the only situation in over 40 years, and that was a very different circumstance, now by comparing a Model T to a modern vehicle.
So, there's also cyber attacks. So, you talk about having cameras. Look what happened to the ship that hit the bridge. The last few minutes are gone. Do you actually have people on site that are watching this? Or are you just going by artificial intelligence and cameras? You know, what if those aren't working at the time? What if it's intentional to go after it? Look what happened, where was it, Paradise? With the train, those people are still suffering with the train wreck that happened there. I mean, I don't feel comfortable, I don't feel safe about it. I do understand you need it. It doesn't have to be here. Is there some other place you could put this? Or where you already have a place, is it enough to carry what you're carrying? How big are these trucks that are coming with it? And you said it's on a daily basis. And again, we don't have all the facts. You can either say what property it's actually going on to, and how are we benefiting from it? The only people that are benefiting is your company. And that's it. How, how is it doing anything for the community? Are we getting any tax dollars for it or anything from it? Or is it just, there's risk, but is there any accountability on your part? Any answers? Whenever there's risk, there needs to be accountability. And there is a lot of risk here. Everybody on the board, please take this into consideration, because I think it's up to you all to decide, you know, how to assist and protect us.
Thank you for your comments. That's part of what we'll consider, of course.
Oh, ma'am. I would comment briefly that perhaps one person that's not necessarily our persons, that's not necessarily being considered here, is the actual landowner that permits this or requests this. Now, I, I believe while it's, there's an inherent danger in all things that apparently there might be, you know, some type of agreement between a landowner who invested with his or her own personal property rights. I'm also moved and intrigued by the fact that our agricultural preserve board has essentially endorsed this plan. So, as I understand the location, they've been before this board multiple times. As I understand the location, it seems to be, to me, as safe a location under the circumstances it can be. I also was concerned with, we have what's called a joint comprehensive zoning plan, which was commented on these, at these meetings before. Now, I served on this board 20 years ago, and I opposed that plan because it didn't have enough permitted uses by right. In my opinion, I haven't seen a whole lot in our township that, you know, allows that, even, even looking into the bigger picture of the other municipalities that happen to be in that joint plan. So, balancing it, which is always what this board has to do and has So, balancing it, which is always what this board has to do, and has to make a, you know, difficult decision. You know, I, I'm inclined to say, well, uh, it's something that's needed, this company employs local people. I feel that, again, this is a stage of the process, there's, there's gonna be more to come. But they need to go through this hoop and hurl first. And, I mean, I hope that addresses some of what your concerns on. Does anybody in the audience say you live within 1,000 feet or 2,000 feet of this, this, this proposed facility? Am I saying it correctly, with, it's at the Herzler Farm? And that's on the fringes of our township, is it not?
Yes.
Okay, does anybody live within 1,000, 2,000 feet that's here today? I'd like to particularly hear from them.
I guess I could. I'm Jim Herzler, H E R T Z L E R, 1933 Hopewell Road. Is that everything?
Yep.
I'm the landowner. They approached me about this, and I said to Keith, well, my wife owns a farm too. Uh, they asked her, and my brother and I own the farm together, and his one. Well, and their wives approved, I said, now, my mother's 90, and the trucks will go past her house. And, uh, she said, I think that would be a good idea to have this committed, so. I'm not concerned about the, uh, the risk. I think it's, I think there's a lack of understanding in how dynamite is stored. And when we understand it, the risk goes away, or the, the concerns will go away. Thank you.
How many years has your mother been on the farm, sir?
Uh, they got married in 53, so she's been there.
Anyone else from the public wish to make public comment? Mr. Steve?
Can we repeat it again?
Okay.
The attorney strong said that the neighbors would be notified when the hearings held before the supervisors for the conditional approval. Typically, as I understand it, a very similar notice goes out, as went out today. So, the neighbors are not gonna be, it would be a general, uh, blanket advertisement made, and the neighbors out there are not gonna be notified. Unless they read the paper. Is that correct? Or do, do, did, uh, did hearings require data notification?
Who notify you, who are you talking about?
I'm talking about when they notice, uh, somebody's for the conditional, uh-
They have to follow the conditional use requirements, the zoning ordinance has notice requirements for conditional use?
What, what are the requirements? What are they?
I don't recall them without looking now.
I, I'm talking-
My belief is, it is within, uh, 1,000 feet of the proposed property.
I, I know that's-
I do not recall, I don't memorize your ordinance, so I'd have to look it up to tell you for sure.
So, as long, as, as long as you're, there, you guys are in agreement that you're gonna send written notices?
There's not an agreement, that's the law, that's the ordinance, that's what a conditional use means.
And the other question I remembered is, was the Sanor ever contacted because it's so close to the state parks? Does, get any kind of input from that one?
I got the same notice everybody else in this room got.
The answer's I know.
I don't know what the answer is, Harold. You wanna make any other argument? You're supposed to make comments, not arguments, Harold. You wanna make any other argument, you can. Does anyone else wish to make public comment?
Do you mind me, again?
Yeah, please.
Linda Light, thank you. Okay, I have a question to the owner of the land. How are you being compensated for this?
I don't think that's an appropriate question for a public hearing.
Will you continue your farming? Will you continue your farming, and what do you farm?
Our crops-
Excuse me, sir, could you please stand up?
I'm sorry, sir. Corn, soybeans, uh, wheat. Uh, primarily source of income is dairy. This is not on farmland, it's woodland, that we're not, it's, uh, not crop land production.
Will the public know that your location, exactly where the bunker is, is at a public location?
Uh, you're last to ask, Karen.
I, I can answer that. When the conditional use application is filed, that's an application filed with the township, there's a plan that's included with that application that shows exactly what's proposed. There will be a public hearing pursuant to public notice, the public will have an opportunity to provide comments. So, all that information will be a part of that process. And then, after that process, assuming there's an approval, then we have to file a land development plan, go through the land development plan approval process, which again is back before the planning commission and back before the board of supervisors. So, this is one very initial step, uh, step in a much longer, uh, process before a shovel could go in the ground for this facility.
How many acres will be around it?
It's a 100 acre pro, over 100 acre property. And we have to comply with all of the setbacks that are imposed both under the ordinance and by DEP and ATF. So, it's a, a very large property.
What is your timeframe, once you start doing this, once you start getting approved?
I don't have an answer for that, we're, again, we're at the very beginning of the process. We still would have to go through the conditional use application process, the land development plan process. So, we're, we're months away from having a permit in hand.
How many different types of explosives will be there?
That would all be information, that would be part of the conditional use application and would be discussed at the hearing. I think that's the one thing that's important to point out, in terms of information being provided, that's all to be covered during the conditional use application process. So, that application will include all of the information to address all of the criteria. And again, I think we have four pages of criteria in the ordinance, and that all will be discussed at the, uh, conditional use hearing. So, we're not at that stage yet, uh, but this is again the first step.
Wanted to make a follow-up comment. With respect to Mr. Steve's issue on notice, some feel that, notice to residents, et cetera, some, some feel that it's a bit of a glitch in the system, if you will, that more notices are given to the public. Now, at the outset of this, before the official convening of our meeting tonight, I, I said how important it was for as many people to get involved and get active and stay involved as possible. But, I'm, while I am an attorney, I'm not here to give any legal advice or anything, I can only just tell you that while that's a glitch in, in some people's system, they have to comply with all the required notices. And, um, I'm certain that if somebody here or at any other time wanted to contact them and be kept informed, I would think they would certainly do that. But I don't think as a township and as people somewhat sensitive to taxpayer costs, we can, uh, ne- necessarily get in the business of notifying everybody. Now, when I say that, I have been critical, I guess is the right word, occasionally, on not putting things on the website, not being as, you know, hopefully as transparent as possible. I like to be totally transparent. That's just my personal thing, and that's not an observation of the remainder of the board. But these are the, the, the difficult situations or difficult decisions that we have. So, uh, we, we fully intend to comply with what legal things we do. Now, I also talked earlier, just briefly, about a joint comprehensive plan. If possible, and when possible, I, I would like to see the, the township, uh, avoid suits, lawsuits for, for, uh, matters that could be avoided. There are times and places that lawsuits are gonna get filed, when somebody's rights are violated, et cetera. That's the system. But if you get into zoning issues and you don't allow people to do certain things that they can do, you know, we, we can run those risks. Now, that's never been, from these people here tonight, there's never been threats or anything like that. And, um, you know, I, I just wanted to, to let you all know that there's, there's a whole bunch of realm of other legal things that need to be, you know, considered and addressed.
Just wanted to add real quick on top of everybody's comments is, um, you're, you're leaning on this because you've heard about it in the meeting. There's also at least three fuel stations in this township that get thousands of gallons of fuel delivered daily. I can speak on personal experience, uh, quarries local to Robinson, Union Borough, um, sorry, Union Township, Birdborough Borough, Montgomery County, most of those explosives traveling tie routes through our township, 724 Route 10, 176. So, this is, it's kinda like Googling why your head hurts. You end up reading stuff that makes you go crazy. This is traveling our township daily, whether it's explosives, whether it's gasoline, whether it's farmers that are storing chemicals, pesticides. I completely understand your concerns, this is why we do this. I'm glad there's concerns, like, it's stated and pledged, there's people in this room filing, there's a discussion being had. But just again, from personal experience on the street, I'm sure the chief could chime in to what he's seen in vehicles and traveling through these products, travel our highways probably more than this individual will on a daily basis.
Yeah, and I can add, recently, we had a vehicle accident involving one of these vehicles falling-
Not chief, not to interrupt you, not his vehicle, unbelated issue.
Not, yeah. It was going to the quarry, and, uh, you know, it was involving a pretty good crash, and, uh, we didn't have any issue with it.
They were very responsive to get out there, immediately secure it, transport it, or physically move it to another vehicle in secured fashion, and get away from that site as soon as possible. You know, that was my first actual run-in with it, but the rest of it was handled in that instance.
Any further public comment?
I just, I, I have-
Stand up, just take your full name and address.
Paulwell, 1429 Hopewell Road, Herzler.
Thank you.
Mr. Herzler? Herzler, yeah. I just have one question. I don't know anything about this, it was just something I thought of. You allow hunting on your property?
That'd be good.
I do allow hunting.
Rifle, shotgun?
We're a rifle with perks, cam.
Okay, what happens if one of those bullets, is that bunker bulletproof? I, I have no idea how this stuff works, that's why I'm asking this question.
I don't know that that's bulletproof, but I think you'd have a hard time passing, right?
Mr. Brubaker, can you comment on that?
Yeah, yeah, happy to do so. So, again, uh, on the site where we're currently operating in Brecknow Township, uh, there are earthen berms around it, so they serve as a protection. Uh, the magazine storage and, uh, themselves, it's steel. Uh, there are layers of hardwood, uh, four inches, I believe, am I correct, four inches thick? I think it's two, two inch layers, uh, different directions of hardwood in there. So, there's a number of different, uh, things that would serve as a deterrent for, uh, for someone, uh, having a stray, uh, shot that, uh, that would head, uh, head toward a magazine. So, uh, most of the, in fact, all of the magazines, uh, storage that I'm aware of in the, uh, in the region are in rural land where there is hunting. And I'm not aware, uh, in 40 years of an incident related to that, uh, that I can recall. Fair question, and I appreciate you bringing that up.
No, thanks.
Anything further?
You mentioned-
Ma'am, Mr., would you stand up, take your full name and address?
Rotherly Horse, 1339 Old River Road. Uh, I think there's a big misconception on explosives and how they actually work. A lot of people think like smoke was powder, if it's in the fire, it will explode. It won't. It'll build up pressure, the container will unravel and just release all the pressure. C4 explosive. You can take C4 explosive, you break a piece off, light it on fire, it will not explode unless you put your foot on top of it and you contain that. Or if you have an initiator. If you use an ANFO, probably granular. Impact won't set it off. You have to have an initiator, correct? So, if you have stump remover in your garage and you have garden fertilizer, if you actually only mix those two together, you're gonna blow yourself up. So, that's more safer than you having these ingredients in your home. So, that's all that is. It's just a misconception of how this stuff operates. There's so much shit on TV and movies that portray this as such a dangerous thing. All depends on whose hands it's in and how they know how to use it.
Or how they understand. Thank you for the explanation.
Anything further?
Linda Light. How large is the bunker? How many foot?
Well, uh, ma'am, one of these details are gonna be happening later, so we obviously understand your concern. They don't have to ask specific questions right now until the next level, because they're gonna present all that information.
Last call for public comment.
Brody Orton, 145 Cold Run Road. I'm probably-
Wait, what, spell your last name?
W E R T, M A N.
And your road name?
Cold Run, it's 145 Cold Run.
Cold Run?
Yep. I'm probably, to answer Mr. Bittler's question, I'm probably his closest neighbor sitting here. I live less than a quarter mile away. I don't see a problem with it, as long as they're gonna follow ATF, DEP and all that. Everybody else sitting here lives in this general area, it seems like, so I think I'd be one of the first ones affected. That's all I have to say.
Does the board have any further input? Before we close the public hearing, remember. Okay, all announced, we're gonna conclude the public hearing. Please note that the board of supervisors will immediately reconvene its regularly scheduled meeting for this date, at which time the board does have this on its agenda and does intend to consider and adopt, uh, well, consider adoption of this ordinance. Feel free to state, uh, a lot for the, uh, public meeting which will follow. And with that, I believe we've covered public comment. The board has nothing further. I believe we can conclude this public hearing. Mr. Chairman, turn the meeting back over to you.
Okay, well, I guess this would be an opportunity if we want to deal with this ordinance for the storage magazine facility. If anyone, you have public comments, there's a few board comments. Um, it would be a pleasure if anyone would like to make a motion or, blah, 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 and then slide.
How many more jumps do we have after this? I mean, the reality is, we have to inform everybody, because it would be like moving the quarry. Like I said, I live next to the quarry. I never got told that the quarry was moving to this side of the hill, till after I built the house.
So, anyone like to make a motion for this ordinance?
This would be ordinance number 24 dash 02.
I think we need to give it the opportunity to move forward.
Make a motion?
I make a motion that we allow this-
You adopt their ordinance?
I wanna adopt ordinance 24 dash 02 for the storage magazine facility. All this is doing is allowing them to move forward.
Do we have a second?
I'll second your question.
Call comes to you.
Yes.
Mr. Della?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Oh, yes.
No, but yes.
Okay. Now, if anybody wants to, before we continue, if anybody wants to get up and leave, so we could give you like two minutes to vacate, so you don't have to be trapped in here.
No, I'll, I'll give them the rest. Here are the original statements. It's a determinate file, okay, the board has five copies shown up, which we're gonna reach to. And then, remember, if you're rolling down, make a clear order. This is, so the planning commission, law, library, county, council. This is, so, the planning commission, law, library, county, council. Yeah, they were signed, right? Yeah, they're, no address?
All right, we will continue without everybody leaving, if needed, for one day. Now, we're back to citizens' concerns, and they left for the sewage.
I think Bobby's just talking.
Well, actually, you can voice your concern, and then we'll deal with what we talked about last night, if you want to.
I'll let that out to Bobby, because I just stay along from the line.
Well, all you have to do is just say you're concerned about the sewage up there, and we're gonna do what we told you last night, so you don't have to do anything fancy.
Oh, okay.
We heard you last Thursday, we heard you last night.
Okay.
Are your names and, name and address?
Um, Randy Zebra, one four two nine Old River Road. Um, basically, the concern is the, the sewer backup, um, basically from fourteen twenty-one down. Um, and please fix it. Um, which is.
All right, well, you were there last night.
Yeah.
We made the motion.
Yep.
It was gonna be briefly brought to the supervisors tonight. Um, so I will make a motion that we authorize the Robinson Township Municipal Authority to repair the sewer lines in the city of Cypher, and make necessary repairs to remediate ionized conditions.
I think the first thing we need to do is, is to actually make the motion to amend the agenda to include this as an emergency. Would we not? It's not one here, since we weren't even getting one.
You don't know they brought up as a citizens' concern. All right, well, I didn't want to make a motion to amend the agenda to deal with the sewage issues in the city of Cypher that we're trying to.
I'll make that motion, and I would add to it that I would, uh, like to address that under Article nine.
Well, we're just changing the, for the agenda.
And I'd like to address that under the emergency provisions in Article nine of our lease with the sewer authority. So, I'll make a motion to, on an emergency basis, amend the agenda, and address this pursuant to our lease.
That's, that's, that's important.
All right, roll call, Mrs. Joy, this is, uh, Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Oh, yes, right, so we amended the agenda, anyone in the public would make any comments, or the board, about the amendment to the agenda before we proceed?
What we're attempting to do, folks, is move forward as fast as possible with respect to remedying a problem in our municipal sewer system. The sewer authority is a distinct, separate legal entity from our board. However, there are, our board of supervisors, however, there is, uh, a significant intertwining, if you will. And earlier, I, I, I referenced our lease agreement, because my motion would be to, uh, have that fixed, investigated and fixed, but pursuant to our lease agreement, the authority will be paying for that.
Well, I still.
Apparently, apparently, so, I wanted Green to pay for everything. I can read that statement to you, Harold, in the, in the lease.
Yeah, but if, if you recall, their complete problem is not that of just a repair.
Right.
So, there's other issues outstanding, and I, I don't, how do you guys, you gotta address that?
All right, we'll have to address them as they get discovered, but we need to do something. I'm, I'm perplexed and upset by the fact that I don't think our ducks are in order as it relates to the lease. The lease that essentially my father signed thirty-five, thirty-eight years ago, expired in twenty twenty-one.
Well, we still should.
And I've got, I've got some concerns that we're not.
And we still, we'll do that, but we still, I mean, when you were there last night, and we made the motion, we were right here, Joan and Harold in Old Burridge, to try and get this.
I, I hear called, there's a resident who has a drain, which they're not supposed to have, that goes into the sewer in their basement, and now it has backed up, and it's in, and she wants that addressed as well.
Well, I'm not, I'm not sure you're phrasing that correctly, that resident's not here right now. Um, but I'm trusting our manager perhaps put our insurance carrier on notice of what appears to be claims. It's a policy I haven't yet looked at, although I am gonna try and get a copy of that tomorrow. Folks, a number of residents asked to be reimbursed for problems associated with that, and as this process unfolds, I'm, I'm sure we'll, we'll talk about that.
Well, I'm gonna, I'll wanna do the motion, now I'm gonna ask Rich a question, but I would still like to make a motion that we authorize the Robinson Township Municipal Authority to repair the sewer lines in the city of Cypher, and make necessary repairs to remediate ionized conditions.
I'll second your question.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes, and did we address the costs from that, in that motion?
And, and I'll go, yes, no, because we, because last, recall last night, and that's what I was gonna ask Rich, did anybody email you anything yet today?
I have not received any quotes as of today. Remember, I believe, under the non-competitive bidding process, it's twenty-three thousand, two hundred dollars we can go to without having placed that up for a bid. However, we also did agree, I believe, that they wanted to actually get a number of different quotes to see where that would fall.
And so, no one's contacted you this morning?
That's correct.
And did Nan give you information yet from?
She has not, so Nan actually stopped in the scene this afternoon, uh, we had a brief conversation, she related to me that she was very pleased, number one, with the action that was taken by the RTMA and its representatives, Key Shortburners, the engineer, and John Dean, in getting as many things as they've done already, uh, the televising lines, did not have a quote, certainly it would take a couple of days to get that, as soon as she had it, she would provide opportunities so that we could then go with the insurance carrier, uh, which, again, there may be different mechanisms within that, and what would be separated, what would not be, that would be on the township.
But, and then, we also discussed last night, detention, and when she gets us this information, will we have a special RTMA meeting to discuss these things? So, I would think the sooner we get that, the better, and then, of course, if we need to advertise twenty-four hours, and whatever, so we have to, you know, so obviously we don't have to do it today. Nothing's gonna get tomorrow, so there'll be nothing for Thursday, for Friday, so.
Right, but, the, her indications were that she would take a couple of days to get it, so what that actually means, it could be Thursday, Friday, before I see anything, as soon as I have it.
And then.
I would form both in terms that we have the information, so we make it before.
We make a special meeting.
Yes.
For the RTMA to deal with.
The actual costs.
The cost. So, we have to get information, but as soon as you get that, we can all get it, us, RTMA, so we can.
So, you're talking about the Robinson Township Municipal Authority, the separate sewer authority from this board?
No, apparently, the question.
So, the concern I had in her particular case is, even if you bring it up, it's not a fixer problem. So, we should probably try to find out what the problem is, before we go forward, because if we give the fixes she has, or she's gonna end it with a bigger problem.
No, we still potentially would have, we'll have to decide that, the special meetings, we kind of brought that up last night.
Yeah.
After the data, after Keith gets stuff, after Joan gets stuff, and then Nan gets stuff, so, we got the, we'll see when we can be, how we think.
Again, I think the first step in this process, as I think everybody heard last night, was to actually correct the issue that, that exists, we believe, to be on Cypher Killian Drive, which is the, the inundation of water into our system. Once that's resolved, then we can start working our way, preferably speaking, downstream, to figure out the other issues, and, and what's, what's causing those.
Uh, Robert Caldwell, one four two nine Old River Road. So, in respect to the, uh, floor drain in her basement, um, a couple of years ago, her neighbor stuck a pickaxe through two hundred and seventy-five gallon oil tank.
Certainly did.
And flooded her basement with heating oil. The township was there, DEP, everybody for cleanup, and no one told her that she's not allowed to have a drain in her basement. I'm not speaking for her, I'm just letting you know that that happened. You know what I mean?
Every resident was sent, everybody on the sewer line was sent a letter telling them that.
When was that?
I have, I'm sending for the letter, lawyer, at that point.
All right, so any other citizens' concerns, because well, that's, that's in process. Any other citizens' concerns?
May I ask a question?
Sure.
Um, do I need to give my name again?
No.
Okay. Um, and I think Bobby can probably talk you all into it, but he had mentioned last night that we have had to, we had to have a plumber come out twice for our rental. Um, and at that point, not really knowing that this issue was going on, would he be eligible to get reimbursed for those two times that they had to come out, um, to do whatever they had to do?
It's still gonna be an insurance carrier question, to be honest with you. Uh, and, and I don't know the answer to that right now. I think what the first thing is, is what this, when, when we create the fix, what effect that has, and from there, that would be then for the insurance carrier to take a look at that, and then determine, we, we create a fix, now, you know, what were the effects of that, and how the fix, does that make sense to everybody?
Yeah, I mean, basically, just get it fixed, and we don't have to do it again.
Correct, and then from there, they'll, they'll follow through the process, so.
All right, any other citizens' concerns? Uh, if not, Rich corresponds.
I do think we had, that was covered at our workshop.
Okay. Chief?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, meeting board presidents. First item on my agenda, also discussions that we had at the workshop last week. Under A, we recommend a motion to the board to purchase two AEDs at a total cost of four thousand, two dollars and ninety cents. This purchase would come from line item four one zero eight zero one, which is capital purchase minor. As noted in the agenda, it's coming in at two dollars and ninety cents over budget, and that purchase would be through Stryker. I'll make a motion that we purchase two AEDs for a total cost of four thousand, two dollars and ninety cents.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Thank you, board. And just to add to that, this is relative to replacing two AEDs that we started applying. Second item on my agenda is, I'm gonna be recommending a motion to purchase services through McLaughlin. It's a annual subscription at a cost of four hundred dollars per year. That's budgeted under my four ten, four two one, which is publications. I went over extensively Thursday night what McLaughlin is. It's a new, obviously, new item coming under publications, not a recurring, therefore, I wanted to bring it before the board's review approval.
Can you make a motion for that one? Okay, I'm making a motion that we allow the chief to get services through McLaughlin, four hundred dollars a year.
I'll second that.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
No, no, yes.
Thank you, board. See, on the list is discuss the March police report. I just wanted to bring something to the board's attention, we had a, we had a busy month of March, and the kitchen had, obviously, our detective, that hit the ground running, as I communicated with the board via email. The first time that I can recall, so that the chief, and maybe all the years that I've worked here, when you look at the arrests, we actually had more criminal arrests than we had summary citations. So, we gave out a total of twenty-two criminal arrests last month, and we only issued twenty-one traffic citations. So, that kind of shows you the work the guy's been doing, the detective in the ground running. So, I just wanted to bring that to the board's attention, because it's a little bit anomalous. Um, and then, my final item is, actually, we need two resolutions relative to the purchase of the police cars, which was authorized by the board Thursday evening, relative to the grant that was received from the local share account, LSA. I need to have, uh, resolutions relative to the maintenance of line items for these vehicles. So, the first resolution would be resolution number?
Well, if we go in order, this would be resolution twenty-four dash one zero.
Okay, so it'd be twenty-four dash one zero, and I'd be creating line item four ten, three nine six, for the twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor vehicle number one. All right, I'll make a motion, uh, to approve, uh, resolution twenty-four dash ten for the Ford Interceptor vehicle number one.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
No, no, yes.
Thank you, board, and then, second resolution, the local's lies. Uh, I'm requesting a thought resolution, twenty-four dash eleven, line item is four ten, point seven three eight, for the twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor vehicle number two. I'll make a motion, we approve, uh, resolution twenty-four eleven for the twenty twenty-three Ford Interceptor vehicle number two.
Roll call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Bittler?
Yes.
Thank you, board. And that's all I have this evening, unless there is any questions to make.
Can I say something? Joe Margie City, owner of Green Hill Subdivision. Chief, I want to thank you for what your police department has done for that property up there, and how diligent you've been, particularly with the artesian well problem we had over the weekend, but I just want you to make sure you know that our company appreciates it.
Thank you, sir, I appreciate that. Yeah, we try to keep an eye, the officer saw that, he alerted, and just try to make communication with the guys.
Yep.
Taking care of, so, it's what we're there for. Thank you.
Ms. Castle, may I say something? I know our township is limited, it's not a huge, huge township, we're, we're like city rutting with how many police officers we have, but with the accidents that have been occurring on seven twenty-four, um, traffic gets backed up. I don't even know why, I just, I, I call it overpopulation, but is there, is there talks about having like more presence, police presence, you know, during maybe rush hour, or, um, bringing the speed limit down around those areas, because it always seems like it's where that people are turning, I, I'm not good at roads, um.
Just put it on Highway sixty-eight, or when you're going to Gibraltar Road?
Gibraltar.
Yeah, Gibraltar, yeah, and Cypher, yeah, like, it's, it's, it just seems to be getting worse, I mean, obviously, you know, we sit on our porch, and it's, it's like Maple Grove, too, like, down seven twenty-four. Um, I just didn't know if there was any talks about trying to come up with some resolutions.
Give her the radar gun.
Yeah, and we could use radar, right?
Yeah.
Yeah, now, the officers, um, obviously, you know, we are limited to what officers, you know, we have out there, um, they do actually do quite a bit of traffic enforcement on seven twenty-four. Um, probably be a fair estimate at this point to say that, you know, majority of our traffic enforcement does come from seven twenty-four, Route ten, you know, roads like that, obviously. Um, you know, the complexity of the traffic issues on seven twenty-four, there's many variables. Um, sometimes it'll back up, obviously, because of an incident on seven twenty-four, which the hardest thing with that is obviously traffic that diverges to your road, right? Which creates another issue.
Yeah.
Uh, unfortunately, when that happens, my officers are usually tied up on that incident on seven twenty-four, so we can't give you the attention that we would like to feel.
Yeah, yeah.
Well, it really. Uh, the other is, this winter is a mess on four twenty-two going through Exeter. People hit it and come through seven twenty-four, and then, that's where it's seen as well. Most of our accidents, um, you know, are operator error, not always speed-related, okay? Sometimes, yes, speed, uh, a lot of distracted drivers, that's not just to seven twenty-four, I think that's everywhere, in general. Uh, people pulling out, people just running into the back end of somebody, you know? But it is a problem, and it's something that, you know, we do monitor. Um, I'm just happy that no one has been injured, you know, seriously, quickly, you know, because we get enough of them as well. But, but thank you, thank you.
All right, thank you, Chief.
Thank you.
All right, Rich?
Okay, for finance, other, we have our monthly, uh, expenses, treasure reports, sortage and work, report to approve, see?
I make a motion to approve all our finances, all the expenses, treasure reports, sortage.
What do you have to say? I'll second, all in favor? And roll call, Mrs. Joy. Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
He took that, yes, not the yes.
Hey, board. All right, our manager's comments, uh, as the submission finally addressed at the workshop, again, as soon as you can get that to me, it'd be much appreciated. Uh, they just due one May, and we asked for about thirty-one marks to make sure we had them in hand and useful, wish time to get them, get them together. So, I appreciate your efforts on that. Uh, the second one, number B, uh, we asked for a replacement copper, that will, again, we'll move that into May, that's not at the top of our, our line right now. Uh, first C, resolution to approve the hazard vulnerability and assessment and mitigation plan. Uh, I would ask for a motion to approve that resolution, if we go with that, it would be resolution twenty-four dash number twelve. Uh, and that, I sent you an email all last week, this can also be found online, folks, Orange County, uh, if you want to take a look at, there's a small piece that applies to us, it's a very, very large plan, it's, it's hundreds of pages, uh, but there is a small section.
but there is a small section that applies to us here in Robinson Township, and again, that's the Hazard Vulnerability Assessment and Mitigation Plan. Obviously, it's under five years, it's just an update to that plan, they like to keep on, on top of, you know, issues and or concerns that they need to address.
What specifically is the power we have from my air matter that relates to our township?
I didn't look specifically into all of those matters. Yes, sir.
Are we listed for any mitigation under that plan?
Mitigation as far as?
Well, we had previously applied for mitigation money for Mount Road and the pipe going through there.
I could not tell you, I did not see that.
And I, I know, we don't keep doing it, it falls off the radar, and they get monies available periodically, but...
I know a couple of things that did address, I think, the intersection of five sixty-eight Route ten, which, which sustains some flooding. There was also, there's also some, I believe, on Old River Road as well, that they addressed in there as a mitigation plan. So, there are pieces in there, I know that some of them, I believe, also addresses the hazard of any kind of a dam break.
Well, Mount Road is progressively getting worse, since they defoliated New Morgan, we have more water coming down through this, it's a matter of time. So, you're gonna have an emergency or close the road.
So, we already have to close the road at, at this point, same thing we've actually done with regard to the intersection of Zion and Bacallo, and that's also flooded due to a number of matters and issues, so it, it's something probably more for the engineer, I think, to address.
I have those same reports that we submitted last year, Dylan Shink, I guess, I can get those to Rich, I think.
Yeah.
I can, I can also those. And the situation with that is, we need to resubmit to the county, but the county can't do anything with them. The current county's hazard material plan has just been updated, it's been passed around for action on the board, should have a tonight's open, I believe.
The full?
Pardon? Yep.
That's a resolution.
There you go.
Yes.
Once that's voted on and passed, not only by this board, but by all the municipalities in the county, then our additional areas can be added to that plan. And that's what's holding us up, and yes, I have that copy, and he mentioned a couple of things there that I looked at, there's probably other areas in the township that can be included in that hazards mitigation plan. Two things that crossed my mind, frequently, Seaton Road floods. Past the bridge, the bridge doesn't flood, the approach to it floods. I don't know if there's any way you could do that, whether it would be pipes in there and raising the road to allow the overflow from the lake to, to get through there. But that's an area that could be looked at. Another area the same way is the bridge, the Sidle Creek Bridge on, on Old River Road. Every time we got a major flood through there, that floods, and the bridge itself's probably still out of order, but everything beyond it is under order. And that's a possibility for mitigation.
Dylan, why don't, why don't you get all that information, Rich, because you're at EMS, so it would just make sense that you already know what their problem is.
Well, I know those areas are problems, those are the ones I know of. There's five, six more heads up there, and a whole bunch of people here that may know of more, and that's all I'm asking for. If anybody else knows of anything else, let Rich know, let me, me know, and we can proceed.
You can't, you can't fix it, you don't know it's broke.
I know we talked about that last night, but now, does anyone like to make a motion to approve?
Yes, because we can't go any, what you're saying is you can't go any further without this being approved?
Right, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
I make a motion to authorize, to approve the Hazard Vulnerability Assessment and Mitigation Plan. Twenty-four dash twelve.
Dash twelve.
Does the plan include the problems that we just presented?
I do not know.
Because, I mean, it doesn't make sense to prove it, that we would have all these other issues laying out here, it takes much time to have them too.
But we gotta have them on hand, for it's in.
He's telling you, you gotta do it, you have to do this first, you can't go any further, they're stuck.
So, we have a motion, sir.
I made a motion to it.
So, that's the, there's another second, okay, you made one I inquire about.
That's, that's why I'm trying to...
No call, Mrs. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
Okay. With respect to, I'm gonna move on from the appresiditional, we'll discuss that later, executive. With regard to the general code ordinance discussion, per request, on, on, oh, excuse me, D, we already did.
Oh.
All right, so D, E, we're gonna move to, to executive, and F, apologies there, surprise Rhodes. With F, general code ordinance discussion, so, we've had a number of discussions on this, I know, I've sent a number of emails to the board about the process and, and what general code does. They're one of a number of businesses that do that. I was given a recommendation by our solicitor to look into another one, and I agreed last week that we would attempt to get an additional quote. When I looked into the company that you referenced, sir, it's been bought out by general code, so, has been fallen under the barrel. However, I did find two additional companies, neither in the local or the area, but they provide the same service, and, and many of these services, or a handful of them, that operate nationally. I do not have quotes back from them, however, I did reconfirm the quote with general code, and their, their quote is at twenty-eight thousand five hundred, which was the original quote that they gave us, and that will remain in effect for six months. Would the board like to receive those other quotes before we take action, or would we like to, if, if you would, to make a motion this evening to authorize up to twenty-eight thousand five hundred for the codification services? And, and then we could move forward, if those other quotes come in in that range, we can then have further discussion about which one we would like to go.
This board member is not in favor of this codification process until we get our own house in order. Our codes are not in order, codification process takes more of a finished product. I think if the board members have read from the feedback we've got from the county, we're full of typos, we're full of things being lost, and we're asking, from my understanding, we're asking a company to do something that's not really set up to do, or really geared to do.
That's a specialty.
At least with the finished product, so, so we're not, we're not ready to do that.
That's saving us money.
Can I finish with the brightest line?
No, because we'll be here for an hour.
So, maybe, maybe I misunderstood, I thought that the codification, part of that was correcting and finding errors and the things that are crisscrossed, like references.
The type of errors, all type of errors, they don't, the type of errors I'm suggesting are, are, should be done before they get that process. While they do a cursory review of that, I, I just don't think we're ready.
It's not a cursory review, they basically go through, and they save us money.
Rich asked us the question, are we gonna make a motion for twenty-eight five, or do we wanna, or do we wanna wait for the other quotes, so?
That, that was, that was my question, okay? The bottom line is, if we authorize twenty-five, okay, we can get the process started, because it's spent, it costs us money between attorneys and our services.
Are you making a motion?
Yes, I am making a motion, because we end up paying more money to our attorneys and to our engineers and stuff, because they have to double back on things.
Do you make a motion for twenty-eight five for the? Do we have a second?
Making a mistake, gentlemen. Why don't we wait for the other quotes that are in?
Well, if we only authorize the twenty-eight five, you can't...
We spend money like drunken sailors at this township. No offense to my friends in the name.
How about the ones over there, it's not like we're spending something outside of what we hide here.
I'll make a second, is that roll call?
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
I'm gonna vote no. I'll vote no.
No, I vote yes.
Thank you, board. Hey, the final note that I have here is a special, our township solicitor, I wanted to let you know that I have asked for a advertisement in the paper, request for proposals, we have due run dates, due run this Friday, the nineteenth, and run again on Sunday, the twenty-first, those proposals are due back to the township, no later than the sixth of May, and they're directed within that advertisement to contact our administrative assistant for the full details required by their, their proposal.
We have the details for us tonight.
I, I have them here.
Has anybody expressed interest today?
Not aware of, sir, not within this conference.
I don't mean this conference, I mean, has anybody expressed interest to be our solicitor?
I believe I have one that is national.
And who's that?
That would be Miss London.
Folks, I've had a, a longstanding policy that I don't believe this board should engage the services of solicitors that are already employed in other capacities and or represent board members, or have represented board members in the past. In my opinion, that would eliminate Miss London, and I'm hoping we get a lot of qualified, you know, interest in the party there. I've often heard there's no shortages of attorneys, so let's, let's hope that we can get someone, you know, more available. So, I, I would, you know, I would approach Miss London right, right out of the get-go.
Just a question, what's the reason for the turnaround on our solicitors?
Very simply, ask Mr. Pedlar.
I'm just curious, because Hartman was here for a very long time, as, as...
This is personnel, this is...
Okay.
This is personnel.
I, I can answer the question if you'd like, what I'm looking for in the solicitor, if, if you'd, if you'd like that.
That wasn't what he asked.
No, I was asking...
They asked what caused us to lose...
Why, we, like cycling, like, I've been coming to township meetings on and off for about ten years, and it was Mr. Hartman for eight to ten years.
No, you're sorry, that's, that's personnel.
And I believe there was somebody before Gene over here, now it's Gene, and it just seems like all of a sudden we're every other year we have to meet a solicitor, that was my only question, I was just curious.
Now, that's personnel, so.
Okay, well, I'm not so sure that is personal, Mr. O'Landau decided to resign for whatever his reasons, if he chooses to articulate those, then he can, and you know, I don't, I don't think it's a, a personality issue per se, I, I think way too many times, this is board wanting to go into executive session, wanting to discuss stuff that should be out in the open.
And per spectrum, Mr. O'Landau, I cannot specify, you know John well, Mr. Pedlar, who it was, so...
All right, Rich, do you have anything else?
Yes, sir, I do.
All right, well, fire.
Should have the past month's report, the only thing I have to add is the tank truck from the one seventy-six incident, when it was in an accident. We're still out two to four weeks yet till we get final repair orders from the companies for vendors. So, it's still in progress. That's all I have.
All right, we'll thank you. Any questions? All right, then, print the hardback, we have minutes expenses reports, and then I'd like to make a motion to three minutes expenses reports in our possession. Do you have any?
Yeah.
You do?
Yeah. Except the, it's expenses and reports in our possession.
Motion, you have a second? No second, no call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
I vote no.
No, no, yes. All right, and here, nine minutes.
Good evening, board. Her main items under the engineering report from your workshop include a ninety-day time extension request for Old Hickory Buildings, the project on Route ten, towards the northern end of the township. They're requesting an extension to August fourth. That request was included in my report.
Not following him, but, okay. I'll brief you, Old Hickory Buildings NPC to time extension plus eight four twenty-four.
So, that's your motion, do you have two seconds?
I'll second that.
No call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
This is on item A, is I'm correct?
Yes.
Vote yes.
No, I vote yes.
Thank you. Second item that I have was also covered in my report at the planning commission meeting. Your planning commission recommended waivers and conditional final plan approval for the McCarthy Ag Building. This is the turf farm, or so it's known as, on five sixty-eight. I believe we have Mr. Hoffer here to discuss that with you.
Yes, it's the eighteen acre tract at the corner of Seaton and Green Hills Road, five sixty-eight. Actually, the only proposal there will be a hole barn with rough dimensions of sixty-two by eighty-two. It'll be for the storage of the tractors, the mowers, of the turf management equipment. The entirety will be formed, there's an existing lane that was penned out approved that accesses the site. The well has been drilled, has been installed. The only outstanding item right now is the construction of the hole barn for the use as agriculture and nature. And with that, there's related items such as lighting that'll go on the building and a stormwater facility to offset the increase in stormwater runoff. The two waivers before you, section four hundred dot A dot two, is that due to the simplistic nature of this land development that it be reviewed and approved simultaneously as both a preliminary and a final? And section five oh three, which establishes street monuments along the right away for both Seaton and Green Hills. As shown on our plan, we are showing four locations of concrete monuments to be set. Your ordinance requires that any deflection or angle along a right away, well, in this case, that would be killing my opinion.
That would be over the burdensome.
That would be horrible.
So, you're looking for a motion for waivers of four hundred dot A dot two and five oh three?
Yes, sir.
I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
And that also includes the plan approval?
Yes.
Yeah.
Yeah, this is a one-step process, in other words, so we're trying to do it.
Yeah, all right, so a motion, a second, I'll call Mr. Joy.
Yeah.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
No, I vote yes.
I'm also requesting preliminary slash final plan approval, subject to any conditions that were set forth by the planning commission in their approval process.
That's your recommendation, engineer room?
It is, and the only condition which was really set forth separately from what's in the letter was investigation with the zoning officer regarding paving. There has been resolution on that matter, and I believe the plans that are in Mr. Hoffer's possession reflect those. I will review that before you sign them, but yes, this plan is...
So, we're in order, and I'll make that motion.
I'll second that.
No call, Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow?
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes?
Yes.
Mr. Pedlar?
Yes.
Thank you all very much, appreciate your time.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, thanks, sir.
Twenty twenty-four street work, I do have contracts, the nurse of, of Ward had gone out to Martin's paving, this is for the oil and chip maintenance portion, so I have contracts to signature this evening. Barry and I met earlier this week to take a look at the paving project, and we are ready to go to bed, I believe you previously authorized that. Our holdup there was primarily twofold, making sure that we had the proper cover crossings in order, as well as making sure that we were gonna fit within our budget constraints, I think that we addressed both those, so we will be going to bed on that project as well. Rich is coordinating a section of Mount Road with New Morgan Borough. The contract will be prepared as such so that we pave with or without them, but we welcome their involvement, if they choose to do so.
Correct, and we did reach out to them, and they have indicated that their township or Borough manager has indicated that they will put that in front of their major work for discussion.
That's all I have for this evening, I'll just give questions and make. All right, if not, it's Mr. Orlando.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. The first item, the construction easements for the Rock Hollow Bridge project. Board authorized execution of those at the workshop last week, I believe they were sold. Rich has the original. It's my recommendation that they remain with the township, I don't see any reason to record them unless there's a problem, they are set up to be, they're, they're in recordable form, they're temporary easements, so I try not to record them, kind of mighties up the landowner's chain of title, and as long as the landowners are bound, which they are by the written agreements, I see no reason to record them. So, I believe that's closed out, Ryan and Whitman can move ahead with the Rock Hollow Bridge project and have the availability of use of the landowner's adjacent properties. I think that's a done deal. Number two, also in our workshop, folks from Green Hills were here and are requesting the board authorize the execution of various agreements. The township issues had... The township issues had previously been that all outstanding matters be resolved, including resolved with the municipal authority. Um, General London called me this afternoon to update me, and it's my understanding from her report that the municipal authority has resolved everything except one issue. Um, and there are some of these agreements that are signed. They did sign the Palm Hall Agreement, although that's actually not complete, um, and you may not know this. Uh, on paragraph ten, the agreement calls for the financial security amount to be stated, and it is not. So that's something.
We, we just received that today.
That's a detail you're gonna have to take care of. The, um, open issue as reported to me by attorney London was the amount of the financial security for phase two of the project, um, and how that's going to be dealt with. I think there is inactive discussions with that. Um, Ryan is, I checked, and he's otherwise satisfied with the plans. Um, our agreements, uh, signed copies of which were just handed me, so I haven't reviewed them. I have no reason to think that they're not what we proposed, although I always like to have a once-over. Uh, the, uh, some bonding companies will require authorization, as Keith explained to you last Thursday. Uh, they don't want to issue the bond and issue their surety, um, unless they know that the agreement has been approved. So I believe the Green Hills folks are asking you for resolution, uh, motions to approve the authorization to enter into the agreements. Keith sent over language to, uh, Rich, uh, which I then asked to be added, just to add that those agreements would be obviously satisfactory in, uh, form and substance to the township, which was added. Uh, since their, the municipal authority is not a hundred percent done, what you could do, uh, is you could, if the board is so inclined, uh, it's really your call, you could adopt or make motions adopting the authorizations as are shown on the agenda under my item number ten. Uh, but, um, reserve release of those agreements, uh, subject to final approval of the release of the plans by the township engineer, subject to final review of the signed agreements by the developer, uh, from my office or the engineer, whichever you know, whichever you're most comfortable with. And of course, we have to get the bond. Uh, we can't release the agreements for the plans without the bond in place, and they want to go ahead and get the bond, this helps them do that. So it makes some sense to, for the board to consider that, with the understanding that the motion would, you're authorizing the approval of the agreements, uh, but not the release of the agreements or the plans at this point.
And just, okay, yeah, I, we just got the numbers from, um, Keith's shoulder today from John late this afternoon, so we can add that in now.
Yep, you can fill that in.
And the, uh, eight hundred thousand dollar bond, that was verbally approved today by the bonding company, but the underwriter will not release it until I have an approval that you have agreed to the agreement. So, and that, that would take me two, two to seven days to deliver that to the township. We could wait till next month, and we can. Now, we're not gonna wait till next month. Or we could wait till next month, sir, that's what we could do. Uh, you could, but you know how much financially you're hurting me by doing that? There's no reason, your consultants do this.
All right, I'm gonna make, I'm gonna make a motion.
So, Mr. Rhodes, on a statement.
Go ahead, Jeff. I'm listening, Jeff.
Is, is there some understanding here that I'm not aware of, Mr. Rhodes, with our developers? Is there some understanding here? I suggest we, we wait a month, there's nothing on our solicitor's agenda, and now we, we still have a lot of loose details.
It was stated by our attorney in detail what they were required to do, what they're held to, and that we're not giving up anything on this. It just allows them to move forward one step.
Any other question or comments?
I, I don't know what the agreements say, what your agenda here says, that the township borough officials are supposed to sign everything. And it doesn't say it once, it says it like four times. So if those documents aren't correct, I'll, why would I sign them? And that's why you don't just rely on one person to review this stuff. Because they do miss things.
But it was given, and it was given.
It's been a month and a half.
I'm just saying, Rich, sir.
I, I would invest four point one million dollars in the township.
It's like a lot. It, it's to the point where, Jeff, didn't you make a motion?
I, I made, I made a motion, that was your. Do you want me to do individual, or can I do them all?
Wait, let Gene, let it follow what Gene said, because it was so, it's so complex, so you get through all the technical wording that.
If you can follow that, the, uh, I'm not sure why, um, the, uh, it says borough official, it shouldn't say borough, it should say township, but otherwise, the wording that you see under item ten B of the agenda would be the, um. But again, I suggested not just the language here, but that the motion itself expressly stated that the agreements are not to be signed or released until the township has all of the documentation and the municipal authority matters been resolved. So with the language, as I've just suggested, you modify it, and those additional express conditions, uh, it's not up to me, it is up to the board.
I second Jeff.
I have, I would, with those conditions, I would have no issue.
I'll make a motion that we enter the agreements for Green Hills Estates based on the conditions of, like, what was it? And not, not to be.
Not to be signed or released until we have everything, including the bond.
Until we have everything, including the bond.
They're not, you know, obviously the word borough, you're, I was, uh, subject to final review.
Subject to final review.
And, uh, subject to completion of the outstanding municipal authority issue.
Subject to the completion of the outstanding municipal authority issue.
I'll second that.
Wait, is there a discussion on that? There's, there's, again, a delegation of this board.
I've already, I've already just said, yes.
And it's now appropriate for a discussion on the motion that's been seconded? You have any idea of Robert's rules of order? So, so, so the issue is, so the issue is, this is another example.
Mr. Bittler, there's, we should go on the floor.
Love it, well, let's stop.
Stop.
This is another example, in my opinion, of this board delegating things we haven't seen or done. I understand there's a financial impact, so I understand that, but, but I don't feel that this is ready.
We don't have this last week.
Can I finish, Ms. Brighton, sir? We're making a mistake. We're delegating when we shouldn't.
But we've complied with everything that you guys have asked us. We've complied, we have come to an agreement.
And our ducks are still not in order.
Yes, they are, we gave you the, yes, we gave you the numbers, we gave you the numbers.
No.
How many questions have I got?
This is, I don't understand why you keep coming against us. Like, we are here to bring something to the community.
And we're not solid BP as you know.
You don't think those things, you know, we all want to.
The only thing I have to say is, if this thing's been reviewed as much as everybody says it has, and it pays much attention to detail, how in the world did the borough officials end up in this thing four times? So it tells me that it's really not been reviewed that well.
All right, well, we have a motion to second, so, we'll call this is.
Yes.
Mr. Gallow.
Yes.
Mr. Rhodes.
Yes.
Mr. Bittler.
I would know.
And I'm going to abstain due to the locality of this property to family property, so I abstain. That's all I have on my agenda.
Thank you for your time, appreciate you.
All right.
Please.
Come on.
All right, Barry, of the works.
Uh, all of the photos, information, or the three pieces of equipment that are going to be listed on municipal orders sent over, um, took a little bit of time because we were having some IT troubles, not if they were resolved. They will go live, if you want to guess, when is that, or back then?
On Thursday.
So it'll probably be live, I'm gonna guess Monday, next week. Um, we are to paint, and the delivery is still set up for tomorrow, uh, for the two thousand twenty-five Freightliner chassis. That will get delivered at Ian Coots, upon getting it delivered, we will do a pre-inspection, make sure it's what we ordered, so on and so forth after that. Um, we have ninety days to get Fennah Freightliner sent up a check. The truck will stay over at Ian Coots, it'll go in and out of their shop as parts arrive. Again, as I say, that the, uh, workshop meeting, truck probably won't be in service till November, December. Hopefully before that, but hopefully we'll be on parts. Um, we.
Resolution's complete. Resolution's complete.
Res, yep. Um, there is another sign company coming out, um, on Thursday at twelve o'clock, if anybody would like to come. They seem to be a little bit more, uh, I was gonna say cheaper than the previous quote that we got. Um, this sign company came by, they just did a quick drive through the, one of the reps were in the area. They're looking at just utilizing the two posts that are out here right now, basically taking that billboard out and putting a new sign in place with a small sign on top that said Robinson Township. A lot less, uh, elaborate than the previous quotes that we got. Um, other than that, just to touch on one thing in regards to the sewer problem, uh, this was beginning of the, we have, what would have been yesterday. Uh, we were doing some grading up in Cypher and found another manhole that were, that wasn't even on their list to look. Um, this was, I shouldn't say the manhole, but it was an eight-inch cover. Uh, I let Keith know, Keith knows about it. I went down, he told me to tell the guy that was doing the sewer scoping, um, so they know about it, so. Which is another thing that was found with that, other than that, that's.
Mr. Redding, was there, was there a patch of roadway disturbed right over the railroad tracks as we go, continue on Cypher? Like, a three-foot by three-foot patches that we were searching for a manhole, or searching for a cover of some point?
There was, there was two of them.
And our road crew did that?
Yes, we did.
And that exposed what?
That exposed two manhole covers that were buried underneath six to seven inches of blacktop. The manhole covers were never raised in previous pavings. So typ, yeah, typically what would happen with an overlay, we, you know, we would come through, or the outside contractor would come through, they would raise that manhole cover with a steel ring, um, that was not done. And when we dug, we found two layers of blacktop, so that's telling me it was.
Hopefully we don't want that to happen anymore.
Several, several years.
And we are going to keep an eye on that for future purpose.
Uh, and just, just so you know, we did, um, we ordered rings for them, so when everything is kind of back to, dare I say, normal there, uh, we will be putting those manholes back to grade.
Yeah, I think there, there were some rings behind the building out here.
There were, um, in talking with Keith, they did not want to utilize those, they wanted to utilize the concrete green ring.
Oh, okay.
So that's what we had done.
And then, did you guys come across any excessive amount of water up here anywhere where you've been digging?
Uh, we, won't say digging, grating, but yes, a lot of water.
But maybe there been any particular location?
No, it's just that water is just pouring off, it, it, water is pouring off the hill, that's all I can say.
How's the water pouring off of a mountain? That's what I don't understand.
I, there's, there's a lot of water coming out of every pipe that's coming off of, I mean, there, there's pipe up there that are coming off of land on, yeah, personal properties, and coming into our swells and, um, drainage pipes, and, and everyone is for it.
Because I used to live up there on Cypher, and there was never water, like.
There's, there's a lot.
Up there, you know, pre-ninety-nine.
Yeah. Uh, uh, the only thing I could contribute to is the enormous amounts of rain that we've had over the last month or so.
Anything else?
Well, that's it.
All right, Rich, parking wreck, and I don't know if we want to.
Oh, Mr. Bolt, you have any updates? Uh, we, we talked a little bit about, uh, A through, uh, E here, and I'll tell you what they are, and if you have an update on them, it'd be great. I know most of these are in process, and over the next few weeks, based on, uh, weather, so, purchase of playground mulch, anything on that? Yep, we said this week, um, just, I'm just, I want to talk to my.
What are we talking about, Mr. Steve?
Well, he, he said about E, and we did, we talked about.
Oh, the electronic signs that they, I did know that, yeah, he talked about that.
Yeah, that's, uh, the resolution. To create a light on it.
Yeah, we did that, in the workshop.
It worked out, we did that. All right, cut it.
Oh, no, it's good. So playground mulch, we've had, I mean, a couple of years, we're finalizing date this week. Um, uh, since I'm involved with scouting, uh, we're looking at as, have the mulch delivered, Ridgewood matched to the lower price we got. They price match, which is great, great company. We're looking to involve local scouts and volunteers, scouts always need free hours, we can help them achieve the community goals and benefits of township for doing that. We're gonna finalize the date this week, hopefully within the next two or three weeks, while the mulch delivered, uh, which is great. Uh, diamond tacks, again, has been done for many years, that's, I think, either on the way or has been ordered. Plowville AA will do that for us at no cost, which is great, they've been a good partner with that as far as that goes. Uh, backstop's been replaced, uh, that was way past its life, and there's a safety issue where walls are getting through the backstop towards spectators. Uh, take a look at the park, um, really good backstop, they did a great job as far as that goes. And then, Rich, I guess I'm, I'm riding in your shoes now, so.
Oh, yeah, there you go, there you go.
So power washing and painting, we got quotes, again, um, we are researching with organizations like the scouts, they do a lot of Eagle projects. We're gonna, we kind of put it on hold, we got the quote, you said, well, hang on a second. We want to actually look at the building this Thursday, figure out, aside of painting and power washing, let's get a feel for the whole building and see what has to happen first, right? Because that's, there's issues with, uh, the drainage, um, water holes up there, I think there's some, there's some, uh, discoloration inside the building. We're looking at it this Thursday, and we also wanted to take the dugouts, which were included in the quote, and, and, and put those on to either Eagle Scout or Girl Scout project. And again, it saves us two thousand dollars, right?
Becky, 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 and see, because if you can do one, she could do the other.
Right, exactly, and the goal is, you know, it, it benefits the scouts for achieving their, their goal, and saves a bunch of a lot of money, which is great. So we're meeting, actually, it's, uh, Thursday to go over those line items and looking at doing inventory, to see what we have our hands on that we can use, again, to go towards saving funds toward park maintenance as far as that goes. Uh, seal coating and line painting, again, kudos to Lisa, by the way, who was on the parking wreck board, she did all the work, so, and she's not here, but she did a wonderful job. Uh, that's, we've, we've done in May, we've got the quotes, they're good. Uh, we are doing basketball court, seal coating and line painting, volleyball court, we'll now become pickleball court. So pretty much, we checked with our, I've got a good friend that played volleyball for years, said, no one ever plays volleyball on asphalt anymore. It's a safety issue, it's dangerous. Pickleball, we'd have people saying, where's your pickleball courts in here? So Raisin's pickleball, too small for tennis, which is a shame, but Raisin's pickleball, that would be a pickleball court. We've already had a group or two that expressed interest of saying, oh, that's cool, you got pickleball, let's know when it's done, which is good. And get more people to use the park, which is, which is great. That's what I thought.
All right, well, I appreciate that.
Um, I just have two things for you.
Thank you, thank you.
One, if you could let me know, maybe a week or so prior to the mulch getting delivered, we would like to install that border.
Oh, perfect.
So we will install the border prior to the mulch coming, over there, we're not messing up the mulch drop. And two, uh, all the material for the backstop that's laying down there, the old material, was the previous contractor coming to get that, or to, are we to take that away?
That, I don't know.
No, I'll have to check, well, I'll, I'll, okay, you.
I did get, yeah, I did reach out, um, and she, I called her on my cell phone to know if she would recognize me.
All right, we'll, we'll, we'll readdress that tomorrow, then.
I just, I would like to get it out of there if we, if it is our, if it is, you know, for us to dispose of that way there, nobody's, you know, playing in it, and, you know.
Right.
Kids, kids climbing around, getting cut or something.
Oh, yeah, that's a great call, uh, we meet Thursday, which is great, oh, no, Thursday, and then I can get your address by, uh.
Yeah.
Perfect, yep, okay, great, yeah, thanks for calling, I'll, yeah.
I, I had one thing I wanted to ask. Where, my family's big into Plowville baseball, and we're gonna be using that field this season. And I know you have a concession stand at the other baseball field where they play soccer.
Right.
Are you guys gonna do anything with the concession stand for Plowville, if we're gonna start using that field, or?
Yep, great question, Bones already there, I've been talking to Carrie, or not Carrie, uh, this is not, this is, yeah, Carrie.
Carrie, right, yeah, yeah.
And, uh, they would love to use it, and we're talking forward of, what do we need to, part of our meeting Thursday is, what can we do to that building to make it usable as a snack stand?
Yeah, I mean, if, that, build it, they will come, from the concept.
Right, which is great, because I, I coached Plowville for fifteen years, I was coach fifteen years with Plowville, and I've played this field many times. Uh, and that's a great fundraiser, you know, for any organization, so, yes, part of our meeting Th- uh, Thursday is, what can we do to that building to make it usable and safe and withstand this for snacks? Right, is there a fridge, is there not a fridge, uh, is, is there a lock, and so on?
If you need, if you need tables, let me know, because I have some really much tables that would be...
That'd be great.
Industrial and useful.
Yep.
So maybe come up with a list of things that you're wish list, because maybe some of us already have them. And I'm in the search and destroy and get rid of things that may be useful for that.
Right, that's great. And that's it, and thanks for bringing that up, that's a great call, Al.
Thank you.
Great, she said there's a batting cage net that was donated?
Yes, yeah, Lisa, Lisa mentioned we have a batting cage net that's been donated by the Redding Phillies, but we were looking into what we could do to actually...
Put it up.
Well, ask them about that, and the poles were used at Plowville.
Yeah, I talked to Derek Geiser, he said they were used, but he also said they did have interest in that for here, and he may speak to...
And what's poles gonna cost, you know what I mean?
He said he did have interest in the net for the Gibraltar field, a pod discussion, so.
Okay.
All right, I'll pass him to you.
Well, probably, so, so Jeff, with that, I think one of the things for the next meeting would be to discuss, you know, looking for quotes for the poles for that batting cage net.
So we have a net, right?
We have the net, yes. And that's been donated to us, we would need the poles to, to build a structure.
Okay, that's, okay.
And then that would come back here to the board of supervision.
All right, got it, okay, thank you.
All right, for F, I know one of the questions that came up, I, I actually increased this to forty-five hundred and I'll explain why. One of the issues that we had, I did not have an updated quote from Reddy with regard to how much it was gonna cost to put this system in. He did get back to me today and, and let me know that the quote would not be, it was happening late, late yesterday, happened. Let me know that the quote was gonna remain the same, which I believe was forty-two twelve and, and some change. However, we also have at least one DEP requirement for an additional fifty dollars. And then we had one, it looks like there could be another fifty dollar requirement on top of that, so an additional hundred dollars. So in order for us to make sure that we did cover all the costs, I was requesting a motion to approve the purchase of this and the attended DEP costs were up to forty-five hundred dollars, just to make sure again we had it covered. Forty-two, it's around forty-two twelve for the actual system itself.
I'll make the motion to approve the purchase of the...
Correct, that's why we had made motion for workshops, because it was fifty dollars more and that wasn't, we didn't know that just prior to the workshop. So that's why I increased it to forty-five hundred, just to make sure we had any of our costs covered.
Make a motion to approve the purchase of a replacement NSF fifty-five ultraballast unit for the Gibraltar park to meet DEP requirements at a cost of forty-five hundred dollars.
Can I call Mr. Joy?
Yes.
Mr. Beller?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Fittler?
Yes.
Okay, and the last item I have on here, Supervisor Breckstein asked me to look into the authorization of the annual early vegetation management service agreement, make sure if those materials being used were, were not in some form of DEP type materials. They are not. They confirmed that, I mean, these going, actually, just weed control on the grass field, so they're not gonna have any contact. So again, my, just requesting your authorization then, I believe it'll be a motion for me to sign those documents to execute the agreement again, to shoot. And I think we should, I believe it was, I don't remember which one, if you brought it up, I think we should look at other options for, for contracts, just to see what they'll develop out there. Immediate, this one, move it now. Do we require a motion for that? Immediate time.
I would like to make a motion to renew the annual Erlich vegetation management service agreements, total of one thousand two hundred and thirty-five hundred twenty-one cents.
I'll make the motion as Chairman Steve.
I'll say, I'll call Mr. Joy.
Yes.
Mr. Beller?
Yes.
Mr. Rose?
Yes.
Mr. Fittler?
Yes.
A question, how much is the cost?
I have to send one thousand two hundred and three dollars.
Thirty dollars, point one cents.
It'll be cheaper for a road crew to get certified to spray yearly, it's only three hundred dollars a year.
Hey, if I can add to that, this contract has been ongoing, correct me if I'm wrong, for years, several years. The reason for that being is it's just simply too big of an area. They come in for the truck, what they're spraying is all the Diamond Tech sectors put that on, so on and so forth. I agree with you, but when we had our previous employee that was here that was pesticide certified, applicant, he had his applicator's license, he did not touch anything in that source of, at the park. Also, the other reason for that is it kind of defers back to Erlich if anything were to happen. Somebody got for big and sick or something like that, they're the ones, they're the ones that hold the liability calling that.
It still falls back on the township.
It will, to an extent.
There, there's still no reason why we don't have, in my opinion, a road crew man that can earn that certification.
What, we...
We, we had one, we should work towards that.
To, to your point, we, I, I am actually interested in doing this.
I left the study materials here about a year ago.
I still have them in the office. Yep, I do.
Yeah, we also use Erlics to, for vegetation, to, to a plant, and the line that goes down to the river. So I don't know whether that was part of that contract or not, but, um...
This is just strictly Gibraltar, Gibraltar ball field, defense, and, and playing equipment area, defense area, and then, yes, we'll hear.
If, if I may, just when Scott came on, he kind of took that over as far as the sewer and the lane going down. Just because it was, it was, you know, feasible for him to do it, it just, we didn't have the equipment, you know, they come in here with a big truck and, you know, they, they can broadcast a lot more than we can.
We're gonna get the guy from Brickout to do it, or?
Yeah, I mean, for this year or until I can go or...
I just really sure it gets done, though.
Yeah, no, it, it will. I mean, to, to your point, to Mr. Beller's point, I do wanna take it because we're basically relying on Brett Knop to spray for us, which the law behind that is totally bizarre. I can actually spray as long as he's driving the truck, don't ask me how that works, but...
And there's a line that...
It's, it's definitely how that works.
Yeah, I, I just...
I'll, I'll put the books to you, I have the...
I, I actually, I, I do, I have the, I have all the reading material and study material in the office, but it's something that we are looking forward to go.
Okay, again, we already discussed the AC matters of the workshop. And I wonder if we have any new business unless there's anything that's pending this evening. The old business we've already discussed, A, B, it should be A, B, C, and D, but however, we have not discussed D, the solicitation of Wimmsen Chief. You asked us to add that to our list.
Yeah, that was a motion filed from the board, had this, so it's an review of the ordinance, kind of fell off the radar, so I just put it on the old business, just to put it back on, so we don't, right, slide away, so that's... What was done with IVC and MuniLinx?
And there's nothing's been done with that.
My, my position is we need to outsource that, our sewer billing, you know, we had a discussion at the authority meeting. Mr. Steve, can you comment on that? Weren't you involved with the whole MuniLinx thing? Yeah, what, no, not MuniLinx. At one point, we got the brigade, the company's called PAMs. And they do all the billing for Drager Town Sewer Guard. They charge a dollar a bill, they collect the money, deposit it in the bank for you. They send you the reports of, you know, who's delinquent, who's gone. And we had actually started that process, we had met with them, and started the process of, uh, moving towards them, but we just never gotten word approval to do that. Oh, that's, that's the direction, I think we should go. We, we can't mail the bills out for what they charge us. That's the direction, I think. Can you, can you put that on agenda next month and we can get that?
Get that on the discussion.
And get the quotes, updated quotes for them? I, I don't have any of the information.
Oh, can you make PAMs?
She'll, she'll find out.
That's the PAMs information?
Yeah.
Okay. I think the one thing we should discuss with, with that would be obviously there are penalties involved with the PAM system that are substantially different than...
You would have to revise your ordinance because PAMs really makes their money if you don't follow the bill. So if you don't turn your paperwork in time, they will send you a fine or a penalty, and the township has to agree to that. And that's where they really make their money if you don't pay. So, and I certainly wanna look at.
Can we suspend?
So, I mean, if everybody does what they're supposed to do, it's going to happen. Well, they're not going to, and I don't wanna note that in that, so we get the, uh... So we get the, uh, information.
No, sir.
Before we go to the executive session, Mr. Chairman, there's a, uh... An item on the agenda that I have to pass over my objection, and I wanna ask you again, clarify, are you requiring me to silence him that you provide strength? So you are requiring it, and I, I would suggest again that I believe this is, this is violation of my First Amendment rights. I, I believe that I'm doing so, letting the board know that I'm doing so under protest. I believe it's forced me to make a decision between those First Amendment rights and my obligations as a duly elected supervisor. And again, I do so with severe disappointment under protest. I think it's a freedom of speech issue, and I, I think the, the public is, is missing out. So with that, I object, can you do what you need to do there?
Executive meeting, fifty-eight.
I think we're going with executive eight fifty-eight.